Good morning, Grant.
Morning, Warden. How are you this morning?
Just fine, thanks. I know.
We're live, Mr. Warden.
Is Ed on, on the phone?
Not yet.
Hello?
Hi, Counsel Ketchba.
Yeah, do you suppose you guys could send me that link again on my municipal website? Not Bay, or not Elgin, but Bayhams?
Certainly.
For some reason, it won't copy over as an active link from when I go, when I sent it from my iPad today, to the laptop.
All members are present, Mr. Warden?
Okay, thank you, Julie. We'll call this meeting to order. The, you need to do a roll call just to verify that, Julie?
No, I think we can see all members present.
Okay, thank you. Order of business is disclosure of beginner interests and general nature thereof. The minutes from April 28th, was any errors or omissions? Motion for the minutes for April 28th, please.
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, secondor?
Jiguer.
Jiguer, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French? Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion moving to committee the whole, please. Secondor?
Marks will move.
Moved by Marks, secondor?
Jones.
Moved by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer? Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you. The next report is on the woodland harvesting activity. Apparently, there's going to be more information to come forward. That'll be coming at our next meeting. So I need a motion to defer, please.
Ketchba moves.
Moved by Ketchba, secondor?
Jiguer.
Seconded by Jiguer, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail? Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, Elgin Incentives. Are you doing that one, Al, or is Jim?
Aye, I am, Mr. Warden.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. The Robert Shaw Moncrief Veterinary Professional Corporation submitted an application to the Elgin Incentives Program for the March intake meeting to be considered for approval for the tax increment equivalency grant as described in the Elgin Incentives Green improvement plan. This grant provides for the well granting back of tax over a five-year period. The amount granted back is equivalent to the difference in taxation based on the reassessment of the property after construction compared with the original assessment prior to construction. The Elgin Incentives Implementation Committee decided that the application, building of a new veterinary facility, met all the requirements of the program and recommended that Southold Council and County Council consider approving the application. Now, I must stress that only the tax increment equivalency grant and the Brownfields grant require approval from council. At Southold's April 27th County Council meeting, their council did approve the application. Rough estimates with valuing the property and building at several hundred thousand dollars and the current impact assessment of the property, eighty-three thousand, results in incremental tax grant of fifty-five thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars based on 2020 tax rates over a five-year period. Southold's portion would be just over twenty-five thousand dollars and the county portion is three thousand six eighty-six. Again, this is all estimates. The final toll of the grant will be issued. What will be issued is dependent upon impacts supplemental assessment of the property that can occur six months to two years after construction is complete. Now, I do want to stress that the township of Southold, Elgin County, will still receive the original taxation amount during that five-year period. So there are three recommendations before council this morning. The first is to file and receive the report. Second is that Elgin County Council approves the tax increment equivalency grant for Robert Shaw Moncrief Veterinary Professional Corporation for one percent of the county's portion of incremental taxes for a five-year period commencing on completion of construction and that this chief administrative officer be directed to sign the financial agreement between the county of Elgin, township of Southold, and Robert Shaw Moncrief Veterinary Professional Corporation. Thank you. And welcome. Any questions?
Thank you, Al. Questions for Al on his report? The non-mover and secondor for Al's report.
I will still move.
By Jones, secondor?
Martin.
Seconded by Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones? Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer? One more time, Counsel Jiguer, sorry?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Enforcement Services, are you doing that, Brian, or Steve?
I'm doing it, Mr. Warden.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
The report for you relates to and seeks approval and authorization to execute an enforcement services agreement between Elgin County and MEU Consulting, which is the same enforcement service provider as in 2019. The, although a wide range of services is provided for under the proposed agreement, the focus will be on parking enforcement in the traffic control area in Port Bruce, the same as last year. The, the format of the agreement will be the same as last year with some minor administrative changes. The only key provision for revision is a two percent invoice or increase in the proposed rate based upon officer categorization. The recommendations are that the report be received and secondly, that subject to finalization to my satisfaction, that council approve and authorize execution of the agreement. I should indicate that since that report was prepared, I have spoken to Chief Menzies, who indicates that the draft agreement is acceptable to him. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve on his report?
Martin?
Have you got a question, Sally, or?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Central Elgin also had an agreement with this same company, and we were having some issues with aggressive behavior and a lot of complaints. So we have actually terminated our agreement. I just want to make sure if it's just for the parking, I'm quite willing to go along with that. I just don't think that we would be wise to have it for anything else, just from experience that Central Elgin have had. Are you also, sorry, are you also aware that they were flying the Canadian flag upside down on their website? We had a lot of complaints about that.
Through you to council, Mr. Warden, I wasn't aware of the latter. The primary focus is simply on the parking enforcement and particularly in, in Port Bruce. Those were the only the only services that were requested. It's a matter of a, our request for a specific service in a specific service area. There's not a general authorization or direction to provide services.
Thank you, Steve. I know that we've dealt with these individuals. Maybe there's more than the ones that we were dealing with, but we've had no problems with them whatsoever. In fact, they're very cordial.
Mr. Warden, Bob Purcell?
Go ahead, Bob.
We also have dealt with them for many years with absolutely no problems, but they do get their direction from council. So they'll be as aggressive or they'll be as passive as you indicate you want them to be. With regards to the flag upside down, that was some hacker that put it up there and it came down as quickly as they found out it was up there and was removed. And the chief said apologies to everybody he thought might have seen it.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate that. Dominic?
Mr. Warden, if I can add also, I think we had positive feedback on parking enforcement last year in Port Bruce, so I'm happy to see that continue. I would want to make sure that the enforcement applies to staff, all the construction workers and contractors. So I've had just a few comments this year. It's a very busy area with all of the different pickup trucks and all the workers there, which is a good thing to see. But we'll have to make sure that parking, you know, whatever restrictions are applicable to staff as well. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve?
Mr. Warden, it's Counsel French.
Go ahead, Mary.
We've been dealing with MEU as well, and they give us excellent service.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there's a recommendation by Steve. Mover and secondor for that, please?
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, secondor?
Jones.
Seconded by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel French? Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba? Counsel Ketchba?
Oh.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
One motion is carried.
Thank you. Reduced speed zones, are you doing that one, Brian?
You're on mute.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report before you details and recommends the extension of an existing sixty-kilometer reduced speed zone on Third Line and Southminster Bourne Road to encompass three green lane landfill road crossing entrances, which are subject to a road use agreement. Recommendation is before you that the Reduced Speed Zone Bylaw seventeen dash eleven be amended as follows. Schedule C, maximum rate of speed sixty kilometers per hour, Road Eighteen, Section A, from one thousand four hundred sixty-five meters west of the center line of South Dell Drive to six hundred ninety meters east of the center line of South Dell Drive, being a total distance of two thousand one hundred fifty-five meters. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Question for Brian on this one? Seeing none, we will be dealing with more of this in closed session. So once we come out of close, then we'll pass this motion. So we'll move on to the road maintenance expenditure. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. This report summarizes county road maintenance expenditures as reported by Elgin member municipalities for 2019 in accordance with the road maintenance agreement. Recommendation is that the receipt, that the report be received and filed. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Brian on the road maintenance? Seeing none, mover and secondor for the report?
I'll move it. French?
Second?
McPhail?
Seconded by McPhail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Strategic Plan, you're doing that one, Julie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of County Council. Elgin County Council recently endorsed the 2020 to 2022 strategic plan as well as an action plan that was developed by management team in support of council's priorities. The action plan was presented to County Council in March of this year and has been revised to indicate progress to date as well as any impacts to the proposed timeline as a result of COVID-19. The report is before you, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for Julie? Seeing none, mover and secondor for the report? Moved by Jones, secondor?
Jiguer, I'll second.
Seconded by Jiguer, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks? Counsel Jones? One more time, Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And Julie, you're doing the COVID-19 business continuity planning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of County Council. This report includes the emergency management team's actions for the month of April as we prepare to enter the next phase of COVID-19 pandemic. The county is preparing to resume some regular activities, albeit in a different format in some cases. Monthly updates will be provided in this format unless council directs otherwise. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for Julie?
Just to comment, excellent report, Julie.
Thank you, Counsel.
Any other questions?
Mr. Warden, it's Grant.
Go ahead, Grant.
Just to thank you, Julie and staff, great job.
Any other questions? Seeing none, mover and secondor for the report, please?
By Marks.
Moved by Marks, secondor?
Ketchba.
Seconded by Ketchba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Counsel, and Warden Mennel?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. We do have a letter from Yarmouth Center. You want to deal with that one, Julie?
Well, the, the letter is before you with information from a number of concerned citizens in Yarmouth Center and surrounding area with their opposition to the proposed Havana outdoor cannabis cultivation operation at the St. Thomas Airport property.
Questions for Julie?
Yeah, Sally.
Go ahead, Sally.
We dealt with this last night at Central Elgin, and we have asked the City of St. Thomas and the cultivator of Havana to respond to the citizens' concerns in writing. And once we have written responses, we are planning to hold a public meeting to give these citizens a chance to ask more questions, et cetera. We'll involve the City of St. Thomas, Havana, Central Elgin, and if the county wishes to be part of it, we would be happy to have them part of it. It is a very serious concern. They have some very legitimate concerns that we need to address.
Thank you, Sally. Questions for Julie or Sally on this report?
Warden, it's Grant.
Grant.
Thank you. I guess it's a, to Julie or maybe Sally, whoever might know, did they do an air needs assessment? Because I know we had a company come to Southold, and one of the first things they did was do air, air all the, and basically the property seemed susceptible because of the downwind residences from that facility. So there should be one if there isn't one.
Through you, Mr. Warden. To my knowledge, I don't believe one has been completed, as that was identified in the, the letter, as being one of their concerns. So I think would be appropriate to wait for the response to Central Elgin Council's request before taking additional action.
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead.
I have to echo what Mayor Martin has said. This surfaced two or three months ago now, with some neighbors contacted me and doing some research, we found out that it's pretty much comes under agriculture. So as long as they're following perceived best management practices, it's pretty much on their own. And it's governed by Health Canada, I believe. But we had some serious concerns because of your talk of drilling a deep well. They were going to do some benchmarking of the wells in the neighborhood. None of that has happened. Now they backed off last night. The information was that they will not be drilling a well this year. But we're taking this very seriously. Some people can get violently ill from the smell. So it's, it's, you know, seems to be out of sight way out by the airport, but some of the neighbors, I think, have very, very legitimate concerns. So I think we'll be following it very closely.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions or comments?
It's Bob Purcell.
Go ahead, Bob.
I, I agree with what Julie said about we should, we should just leave it till we're requested to later if necessary. But I think it's important, and I'm sure she's going to do it anyway, that the county monitor this very closely because this has impacts in all of our municipalities, not for just the outside grows, but also the greenhouse grows that are popping up. And at the present time, basically, it's federal approval and away they go with some restrictions around agricultural. But it was, the agricultural rules and regulations were never designed for this particular product. So I think it's important, we can probably use this one as a very good learning experience for all of us.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions or comments? This time, we'll just receive and file, and then we'll see where that goes from here with Central Elgin. So a motion, receive and file?
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, secondor?
Ketchba.
Ketchba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We have three letters from correspondence. Anyone wish to make comment on any of the letters? Seeing none, just a motion to receive and file the correspondence.
Jiguer, I'll move.
Seconded by Jiguer, secondor?
Jones.
Martin.
By Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer? Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Anything else before we move into closed session? Need a motion to be resolved, but we now proceeded to close session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under the Municipal Act two thirty-nine dash two, and there are seven items under closed session. So mover and secondor for that?
Martin, move.
Seconded by Martin, secondor? Seconded by Marks, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks? Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. You need a minute before we go into close to get things arranged, Julie?
We're back on live, Mr. Warden.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes.
So I need a mover and secondor to rise and report?
Ketchba moves.
Moved by Ketchba, secondor?
Jones.
Seconded by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion is carried.
Thank you. So we'll deal with the closed meeting agenda? One?
Closed meeting, item number one for Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology. Resolved that, Elgin County Council agreed to provide a lender of SWIFT the county's guarantee in the amount of one million one hundred nineteen thousand dollars in support of a credit facility to provide SWIFT with a short-term bridge financing in the amount of six million dollars to be used by SWIFT to finance the Elgin County project identified in its SWIFT contribution agreement with the federal and provincial governments, and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to send a letter of intent to SWIFT acknowledging this guarantee, and further, that the guarantee shall expire once all contracts signed by SWIFT in regard to its Elgin County project have been fulfilled and SWIFT is reimbursed by the federal and provincial governments in accordance with the SWIFT project contribution agreement.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and secondor, please?
Mark's happy to move.
Moved by Purcell?
Seconded by Marks.
Seconded by Marks, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Thank you. And Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item two?
Item two. Be it resolved that the county solicitor be directed to cease efforts to negotiate a suspension agreement with West Elgin Community Health Center in respect of the Meals on Wheels supply agreement.
Thank you, Julie, mover and seconder, please.
Jagger, I'll move.
Moved by Jagger, seconder.
I'll second it, French.
Seconded by French, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item number three.
Be it resolved that council proceed with finalization and execution of the cost-sharing agreement on the understanding that all costs and expenses associated with employment of the fire training officer, county emergency management coordinator, be borne in the first instance by Elgin County, but thereafter be reimbursed by all local municipalities, namely Bam, Malahide, Almar, Central Elgin, Southhold, Dutton Dunwich, and West Elgin, through inclusion of such costs and expenses in the annual municipal levy by Elgin, as upper-tier municipality to each such local municipality collectively as lower municipal, lower-tier municipalities, and that direction be given to the chief administrative officer and county solicitor to revise the draft cost-sharing agreement to name only cooperating local municipalities, namely Bam, Malahide, Southhold, Dutton Dunwich, and West Elgin, as local municipalities and parties thereto, and in combination with Elgin, to thereafter execute the said cost-sharing agreement, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to execute the said cost-sharing agreement on behalf of the corporation of the county of Elgin.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and seconder, please.
McPhail.
Moved by McPhail, seconded by Jones, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Item number four.
Be it resolved that County, Elgin County Council consider approving and authorizing to, consider approval and authorization to execute a new one-year commercial lease agreement in favor of Alzheimer Society Elgin-St. Thomas in respect of existing leased premises, Rooms two twenty-nine, two thirty-two, two thirty-seven dash one, and three thirty-four in the established form and content, and more specifically, providing for increases in basic rent, uh, to sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents per square foot for storage, seven dollars and, sorry, per square foot and storage, um, at seven dollars and eighty cents per square foot, with a one-year renewal option at a specified rental rate of seventeen dollars and seventeen cents per square foot, and storage would be seven dollars and eighty cents per square foot.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and seconder, please.
Jagger, I'll move.
Moved by Jagger, seconder.
Martin.
Seconded by Martin, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yeah.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item number five.
Resolve that Elgin County Council consider approval and authorization to execute a road user agreement with the City of Toronto and CRA Landfill Operations Limited relating to three existing and/or proposed vehicular road crossings across Elgin County Road Eighteen, both Third Line and Southminster Bourne, and therefore thereafter proceed to approve and authorize execution of such agreement in a form of and of content acceptable to county solicitor by the warden and chief administrative officer on behalf of the corporation of the county of Elgin.
Thank you, Julie. Questions or some questions? Mover and seconder?
Liz.
Moved by Jones, seconder.
Ketchabahs.
Ketchabah, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yeah.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Number six.
Resolve that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder?
Jagger, I'll move.
Jagger, seconder?
I'll second it, French.
French, second, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Number seven.
Be it resolved that the verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and seconder, please.
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, seconder.
Jagger.
Seconded by Jagger, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail. Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yeah.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. I neglected, under other business, any statements or inquiries by members? Notice of motion? Matters of urgency. I need a mover and seconder for the, uh, recommendation from committee of the whole.
One moment, Mr. Warden, if we could, we have to circle back to, um, the Reduced Speed Limit Zone Amendment for County Road Eighteen.
Okay, sorry, Julie. Go ahead.
So the recommendation, following the report from the county engineer, was that the Reduced Speed Zone Bylaw seventeen eleven be amended as follows. Schedule C, maximum rate of speed sixty kilometers per hour, Road Eighteen, Section A, from fourteen hundred and sixty-five meters west of the center line of Southdale Drive to six hundred and ninety meters east of the center line of Southdale Drive, being a total distance of two thousand one hundred and fifty-five meters.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and seconder for the report? Moved by Jones, seconder.
Ketchabah.
McPhail. Seconded by Ketchabah, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yeah.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Now we need a motion for the recommendation from committee of the whole. Seconder, please.
I'll move it, French.
Moved by French, seconder.
Purcell.
Seconded by Purcell, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yeah.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Jagger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Bylaws, Julie?
Thank you, be it a first, second, and third read of Bylaw twenty dash twenty-three, being a bylaw to establish a pay schedule for employees covered by the job evaluation scale.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, please.
Martin.
Marks, seconder.